I'd like to call the 2020 January 21st Tuesday, uh, meeting of the Michigan City Common Council to order. Can everyone please silence all electronic devices and stand for the pleasurable lesions? And I'm going to start a prayer.
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nyla, up the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswellinski?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Ms. Tillman?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Deitch? Present. Mr. Don Preswellinski?
Present.
And Mr. Stemley?
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Uh, has everyone had a chance to look at the minutes of our January 7th meeting? If so, I'd like to, uh, call for a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve.
Support.
We have a motion to approve the minutes by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Minutes approved. Are there any reports of standing committees? Councilwoman Deitch?
Yes, um, Council, Council President, um, the Judiciary and Rules Committee was called to order at 5:30 PM on January 14th with committee members, uh, myself as chair, uh, Councilman Simmons, Councilman Mack, all present, um, Council President Sean Fitzpatrick, Council Attorney Jim Meyer, Mayor Duane Perry were also present, and several council members and members from the public were in attendance as well. Um, Chair Deitch opened with rea- with reasoning on the amendments to help streamline the mea- the meeting and possible changes to the agenda. She passed around a few copies of the code to the committee and other members of, members of the council. Um, section two dash fifty-one A two to change suspension of rules by unanimous consent to two-thirds vote. Discussion pursued with comments from, from both committee members in support of the change. Section two dash sixty-six B three, remove requirement of council members to fill out a board commission form to turn in for approval. Comments from both committee members in support of the change. Chair asked for any comments for other co- from other council members or the public on the two issues. Um, sectioned two dash fifty-nine order of business, Chair shared a request by Councilmember Dabney to move the claims docket directly after reports from standing committees. She also welcomed discussion on moving public comment to the beginning of the meeting instead of the end. Discussion pursued for approximately thirty minutes from council members, the public, and Mayor Perry. No decision was made on moving public comment. The Chair and committee will seek input from the public and create a survey. There were pros and cons, um, shared by several people. Um, actions that were made, uh, motion by Councilman Mack to recommend the following. Um, sectioned two dash fifty-one A two is amended to read as follows. Um, except for section two dash fifty-seven regarding the number of readings of the ordinance and to the extent not in violation of any state law, the provisions of this division may be suspended by two-thirds vote of the members. Section, number two, section two dash sixty-six B three is amended to read as follows. In order to be eligible for nomination, a completed candidate's form must be filed in the clerk's office by noon of the Thursday before the next meeting. Then serving council members are not required to fulfill this requirement. And three, section two dash fifty-nine order of business is amended to move the approval of claims and transfers for fund number four seventeen Boyd Development and for, uh, fund number nine thousand Riverboat after reports from standing committees as defined in section two dash sixty-two. Second was made by Councilman Simmons, recommendation passed three to zero. Motion adjourned by Councilman Simmons and second by Councilman Mack at six fourteen. Meeting was taped by ALCO and is available online, submitted January fifteenth, twenty twenty, respectfully, Angie Nelson Deitch.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Are there any other reports of standing committees? Councilman Dabney?
All right. Uh, tonight's Finance Committee meeting was called to order at six oh five PM by Chairman Dabney to review claims filed since our last meeting. Committee members Tillman and Paul Preswellinski were present, as well as council members Simmons, Fitzpatrick, uh, Stemley, and Don Preswellinski. Uh, City Controller Yvonne Hoffmaster was in attendance, as well as City Attorney Jim Meyer. Claims review total of one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-three cents from the River, Riverboat Fund and fourteen thousand six hundred two dollars and fifty-eight cents from Boyd Development Fund for a total, uh, docket of two thousand, uh, two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and eleven cents. There were questions regarding a, a truck purchase, uh, can't remember the exact name, M and K Truck Center of Gary LLC for a hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, uh, on this docket. That was a payment, a final payment, uh, of a truck purchase that was approved back in two thousand nineteen, that was cleared up by, um, Yvonne Hoffmaster. And there was also questions in regards to thirty-two thousand dollars of diving equipment, uh, that was discussed last year and, and, uh, we decided to pay for that, uh, for the, the fire department and a payment to We Create Media of fourteen thousand six hundred two dollars, and that was because that's the final payment of last year's contract. Okay. Eventually, uh, Councilman Paul Preswellinski moved to, uh, recommend approval of the docket with a second by Councilwoman, uh, Tillman, the motion was approved unanimously. On a motion made by, uh, Councilman Paul Preswellinski and a second, again, by Councilwoman Tillman, the meeting was adjourned at six nineteen PM. The summary of claims are as follows. Beachside, uh, this is from the Riverboat Fund, Beachside Garden Center, three hundred seventy-eight dollars. Dogwood Hills Tree Farm, eight thousand six hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty cents. M and K Truck Center of Gary LLC, one hundred fourteen thousand nine hundred ninety-one dollars even. Tyler Technologies, seven thousand one hundred seventeen dollars and eighty-four cents. Acme Communications, Inc., three hundred ninety dollars even. Allegiant Fire Protection, six hundred, six hundred forty dollars even. AT&amp;T, three thousand six hundred forty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. Colossus, Inc., sixteen thousand, uh, two hundred seventy-three dollars and forty-nine cents. Tomcast, twenty-four dollars and sixty-four cents. Crown Castle Tours LLC, nine hundred seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. DLZ, three thousand three hundred thirty-one dollars and thirty-five cents. Enterprise Rent-A-Car, eighteen hundred four dollars and sixty-six cents. Glen Haven Management, two thousand nine hundred thirteen dollars and nineteen cents. Great American Financial Services, one thousand four hundred thirty-two dollars and sixty-six cents. Harris Precast, Inc., one hundred ninety-four dollars and twenty-four cents. Indiana State Budget Agency, six hundred fifty dollars even. Lake County Diver Supply, thirty-two thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars even. The Fort County Sheriff, two thousand four hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-four cents. And South Bend Regional Police, seven hundred fifty dollars even. For a total from the Riverboat, once again, of one hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred, uh, seventy-three dollars and fifty-three cents. And then from the Boyd Development Fund, we had that one payment from We Create Media of fourteen thousand, uh, six hundred two dollars and fifty-eight cents. For a total claims docket of two hundred thirteen thousand five hundred seventy-six dollars and eleven cents. And that concludes tonight's, uh, Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Uh, do we have a motion to approve the claims?
Submit.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a, a motion to approve the claim by Councilman Dabney and a second by Councilman Paul Preswellinski. Did you have a, a question?
I got one additional question that I, I thought about since that meet, meeting prior before, um, this, uh, two thousand four hundred for the, uh, forensic scanner, I, uh, I'm wondering if we should find out what this is exactly about because we had an issue during our budget hearings, and I wonder if this has anything to do with that, and that we should amend that, the docket to, uh, eliminate that payment for now. So, I guess I'm, I'll make that motion to, uh, amend the docket to not pay that two thousand four hundred and thirty-four fifty-four cents to, uh, the Fort County Sheriff at this time for the forensic scanner until I'm gonna find out exactly what that entails.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion to amend the docket for the set amount for the forensic scan, uh, from, from Sheriff, the county sheriff?
Yeah.
And a second by Councilman, uh, Don Preswellinski. Uh, all in favor of the amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, we have eight in favor and one opposed. So the amendment carries, is there a, um, we still had a second on the, the rest of the docket, so, uh, all in favor of paying the claims with the amendment? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, do we have any, uh, other reports of standing committees? Do we have any reports of special or select committees? As of now, we're gonna move on. Are there any reports of other city officers or departments? Mayor Perry?
Thank you, Mr. President. Scoot this back, I feel like I'm right on top, everybody. Duane Perry, Mayor of Michigan City, twenty-two oh six Maple Street. Mr. President, members of the council, since I last addressed you at, at your previous meeting, there have been some developments and additional information obtained on both the alleged theft at Central Services that you were looking at the last quarter of two thousand nineteen, as well as our budget status. I feel it important that I address this with you this evening, the information and actions taken by the mayor's office. As far as the central service theft, there have been some additional items that are in question, and I have requested a criminal inv- investigation by our police department, which is currently in process. Regarding that and also the status of the budget, I called an all-hands meeting last Friday for every department head. During the meeting, I first addressed the theft situation, instructing every department head to instruct their employees that Michigan City government is gonna be one of integrity and honesty, and anyone who's a thief will not be working for Michigan City four years from now, because I will find them and I will fire them. Those are my exact words that I delivered to department heads to deliver to their employees. Regarding the budget, the previous number that we gave you, that the two thousand nineteen budget would be in the red at the end of the year, a shortfall of money, we have less, uh, we have no money left over. We have over expended our budget. Originally, the number was one point six million dollars. Well, at this time, we're in the final stages of our review, Ms. Hoffmaster, our controller, and it looks like we're in the vicinity of an additional one point eight million dollars for a total of three point four million dollars. Now, it's pretty, pretty close to the final number, don't expect anymore, but until Ms. Hoffmaster tells me she's done, that's what we're looking at right now. That being known, when I addressed the department heads, I gave them that information, plus the fact that the two thousand nine, the two thou- excuse me, the two thousand twenty budget has been analyzed, and it appears that it was generated utilizing fifty percent of our Riverboat revenues for the year to pay operating expenses only. Situation which is very dangerous. That being said, when I addressed the department heads, I put a one-year mat- moratorium on capital expenditures for two thousand twenty. I also said that department heads will begin immediately exercising cost control, their own cost control, which they have not done in the past. And we, they will submit a report monthly to our controller, itemizing their expenses for the month. And finally, any department that ends up at the end of the year in the red, that department head will be fired, they'll be removed from that position. I felt it appropriate to advise you of the situation and what I've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Perry. Are there any other reports of city officers or department heads? Having not, onto the claims docket, uh, fund two thousand forty-two Riverboat claims are as follows. One hundred ninety-eight thousand nine hundred seventy-three dollars and fifty-three cents. Uh, fund two thousand thirty-one Boyd Development, fourteen thousand six hundred two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um, Ms. Nyla, are, are there any petitions?
The claim here, subtracted.
You have to subtract what you amended.
Thank you. So there was an amendment to this on the Riverboat minus?
Not the Riverboat Boyd.
Yeah, I got it.
The total, uh, on the docket comes out to, uh, two hundred thousand eleven, uh, one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
We gotta subtract that from the one ninety-eight from the Riverboat. Yeah. Five three eight nine nine.
Five three eight nine nine.
So for, yeah.
That's where it was subtracted.
So for fund correction, uh, for fund two thousand forty-two Riverboat claims, the total is one hundred ninety-six thousand five hundred and thirty-eight dollars and ninety-nine cents. And again, on the, on twenty thirty-one Boyd Development is fourteen thousand six hundred and two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Total is two one one, one four one, point five seven.
For a grand total of two hundred and eleven thousand dollars, one hundred and forty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Motion to approve? Support. I move.
That might have proven before.
Motion by Councilman Paul Preswellinski and second by Councilwoman Deitch to approve the, the claims docket. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Nyla, do we have any petitions?
There are no petitions.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Uh, communications?
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on January sixth and January thirteenth from DLZ for their weekly activities report ESG Energy Project. Correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on January thirteenth from DLZ, their field observation visit, ESG Energy Project Solar System Inspection at Michigan City Police Station. Correspondence received in the clerk's office on January sixth from Clarence Halls, Executive Director of Economic Development Corporation. Um, correspondence was received January second from the NAACP President, Laporte County, Wes Scully, regarding the appoint- regarding reporting, appointing Ms. Fay Moore to the Women's Commission. And correspondence was also received in the clerk's office on January ninth from, uh, Daniel Peck, CEO of the Swanson Center, appointing Willie Millsup as an appointment to the social status of African-American males.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Uh, our first resolution by title only without objection?
A resolution by title only approving the transfer of funds to various funds, and this is introduced by Mr. Dabney.
Uh, does the sponsor have anything to add at this time?
At this time, I will, the city, if, uh, our city controller, Yvonne Hoffmaster, wants to comment, then I'll comment after that, if she wants to. Let me take it?
Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, real quick, I'll give you an explanation of, of the dollar amounts and, and why they're the way they are here, what, why we're making this transfer, uh, to aviation operating, fifty-five thousand dollars. And this, this, um, budget shortage here is due to low revenues from fuel sales. Um, so the, the expenses obviously outweighed the fuel services. There was normally a forty thousand dollar transfer, uh, that happened every year from fuel, fuel cell, um, but obviously that revenue wasn't there in order to make that forty thousand dollar transfer, so it's, it's come up short. So this is why we have to, uh, make this transfer to bring this out of the red. Cumulative capital development, one hundred forty-three thousand dollars. What happened here is that, uh, we purchased a fire truck, pumper truck, uh, that expended a majority of the cash in the fund, then after that cash purchase was made, uh, the last controller did not monitor the, the, uh, account after that happened. You have to change your forecast once you make a huge purchase like that, and so the spending was allowed to continue, uh, on and thus ran that account into the red. The MC, uh, Employee Medical Trust, six hundred thousand dollars there, um, and this was, has been budget, budgeted very close for years, but back in, I can't remember the year, two thou- what's the year, I'm sorry? I didn't have the... This began to run in the red, uh, years from under budgeting, and it just needs to be made solvent, um, and this will also create a small cushion within that, that medical trust fund. The police pension and fire pension is the same explanation, but police, uh, pension is six hundred thousand dollars needed, and also, and then there's four hundred thousand dollars for fire. And then there was, uh, something that was changed back in two thousand eight, where certain payments were being reimbursed, uh, by the state, but they were no longer being re- reimbursed. So what happened over time is that it's just chipping away, chipping away since two thousand eight, and finally, it's caught up to us, now there is a shortage. So we are now aware of that, and we have to, you know, to take care of that on our end, but what happened, like I said, there was a law that had changed, uh, where something was funded, where there was a tax levy that had come in to, to cover certain charges that were no longer being covered. So like I said, as time went on, it just got eaten away, eaten away, um, so now, we're in, uh, the hole with the, the, the police pension and fire pension. So those, that's the explanation for the need for the transfers into these accounts.
Thank you, Councilman Dabney. Uh, we have a motion to adopt this resolution by Councilman Paul Preswellinski, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, we have a second by Councilman Michael Mack. Uh, all in favor?
Point of order.
Point of order.
This, we need a comment. No, point, point of order, if I may?
Sure, Councilman.
Okay, is that once the councilman here explains his resolution, then it goes out for public comment, then it comes back to the council for council comment and motions at that time. So it has to go out to the public first, then it comes back to the council.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any public comment on this resolution?
Or, or move my, uh, motion.
Thank you, Councilman. Is there any public comment on this motion? Is there any public comment on this motion? I mean, on this resolution? Is any council comment?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Yeah. I have a, uh, couple of questions, and I know that Councilman Dabney explained it with the best information, I'm sure he was provided, but I'd, I'd like to speak on this fire truck issue, where a pumper truck costs eight hundred thousand dollars to purchase, and I think you said it was a hundred and forty-three thousand?
That we need to cover now.
That we need, that we need to cover now, because there was a shortfall. And I guess, you know, why would the city controller, Mr. Murphy at that time, go ahead without the money even being in account, go ahead and purchase the fire truck without not having all the money either there or a plan to pay for it when the truck got here? And I'm assuming that the fire truck is here, correct? Is the fire truck here?
Pumper truck?
Is the pumper truck here? Was it delivered?
Well, I'm certain.
I don't know if it was delivered or not.
First of all, I believe that, um, what we were talking about on that hundred and forty-three thousand was a, uh, a purchase of a, uh, truck?
Right.
Um, for the, uh, I believe the street department, uh, with, uh, heavy as a Mack truck, if I'm not mistaken. That, that was the, this was the, uh, second payment on it, and that the first payment was made last year when the truck was ordered.
I think that was the...
That's the docket.
Yeah, that was the docket. That's on the docket, Councilman. What we're talking about is the pumper truck that Mr. Dabney was talking about.
I'm loo- I'm looking at, I'm looking at covering the money on what I believe that we're talking about, okay? In the, uh, meeting for the Finance Committee that, uh, Mrs. Hoffmaster was talking, talking about, I didn't recall a fire truck being mentioned, and it was a, uh, work truck, Mack, it was a Mack, you know, had, I, I don't know if it was a dual-axle Mack or what it was, but it's the second payment on it, okay? But neither here nor, here nor there, the, the problem is, is what Mr. Dabney was addressing was these overruns and not, and not watching, and that, these things have to be paid, okay? This is a contracted issue, so they, they have to be paid. I guess going forward, which I have every bit of confidence in, in the mayor and Ms.-Mrs. Hoffma- Master, that we're gonna have additional information and that, uh, the controller is wrapping up the, uh, two thousand, or trying to get through the two thousand twenty overages, and, um, she's pretty confident that, that this will be the extent of it, and then she's gonna work on the, uh, two thousand and twenty budget, um, you know, for this year, going through their X and O things. Did I pretty much summarize that, Yvonne?
Okay.
Okay, so you, that, that's what basically was going on there, so we got that clarified. It was, it wasn't a fire truck, it was a Mack, whatever model, you know, for about two hundred and eighty grand.
Right. Uh, I, uh, I'll clear it out, Councilman. Um, Ms. Hoffmaster, do you want to clear that, clear this up?
Um, yes, Yvonne Hoffmaster, City Controller. Uh, Don, to, to your question, I believe the city took delivery on that fire truck in May of last year, because that's when we, uh, expended the money to pay for that truck. So, so what had happened after they paid for the fire truck, the fire department still had the majority of their appropriated budget available, what they thought to spend. The, they were never informed that they needed to stop the spending because they had expended all of the cash, not the budget, but the cash that was in the fund. Since they were not informed of that, they continued to buy their other, uh, safety equipment, you know, whether it was their hoses, their, their SCBAs, um, um, they have several things like that in, in that budget that they purchased, and because they were not informed, they continued to spend the money, and then when it came to the end of the year, we're looking through this, and this fund was, was roughly a hundred and forty-three thousand dollars in the red, which that's the cash deficit, not the budget. The cash was in the red.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Hoffmaster. Uh, Councilman Preswell...
Yeah, to, to continue on, and, uh, thank you, Councilman Preswellinski, for, uh, interjecting, uh, with the fire truck, uh, but, and I, and I understand what we're doing here, and we're paying off... Uh, but, and I, and I understand what we're doing here and we're paying off funds that have been underfunded. But as a councilman, I still, I'm inquiring, and I guess in, in making comments in discuss of what was going on and why the budget was being handled the way it was. I should say in discuss and disappointment. Uh, the city council was not made aware of this at any time throughout the year that these problems existed. And I spoke to other council members about it. And they're also very disappointed with what took place in the uh, Controller's Office. And yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and support this. I have to in order to shore up all the accounts, and I'm sure everything's gonna get straightened out. Uh, but I just ha- I just want to express, like I said, my uh, my disgust, my disappointment in the past administration, and especially uh, with the city controller for operating in such a manner to basically run the riverboat funding down to one point, I think it's one point five or one point, well, I'll be exact. I'll be exact here for the public. So here's how much riverboat money we have left. We generally had about five million at the end of every year uh, to go with. But this year, we, we ended up at one point two million dollars in the riverboat funding. So that's where we're at as a uh, a city, and that's why Mayor Perry did what uh, he did to uh, stop the spending. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Uh, Council, uh, Councilwoman Deitch.
Um, um, Mrs. Hoffmaster, you said so the fine wasn't the cash deficit, but the budget they did, so did they not overrun their budget?
No, none, none of these, the budgets were not overrun in any of these funds.
Okay.
It was the cash. They all suffered cash deficits at the end of two thousand nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Councilwoman, uh, Tillman.
Uh, Mrs. Hoffmaster, in regards to the uh, police pen- I apologize for that. In regards to the police pension of the six hundred thousand dollars, how would this um, amount change based on the um, investigation regarding the um, death and the um, misappropriation of the pension funds that was
It's not.
still being given to that individual spouse?
The, the amount that was paid out um, is, is basically immaterial to that six hundred thousand dollars. With um, I, I maybe try to explain a little further from, from what Mr. Dabney had said. The, the pension funds are funded from the state through the Pension Relief Fund. The state only reimburses the actual pension liability. But there are other expenses in the pension budget. They uh, they pay for the physicals for new hires. They, they give a stipend to the pension secretaries. Um, there's some minor supply money, uh, you know, just minor things like that that unfortunately, since two thousand eight, was not funded. The, the revenue of the um, revenue was not adjusted to cover those additional expenses. So the, the balances in those funds were allowed to run down over the years. So after twelve years, those funds actually ended in the red at the end of two thousand eighteen also. You know, quite considerable. So this, so the, the shortage in the revenues for two thousand nineteen just compounded that, that cash deficit in those two funds. So what we need to do in the future is, is manage the budget where the city is giving a, a um, stipend to those funds that will cover the expenses outside of the actual pension liability.
Thank you.
Mr. President, one more question?
Thank you, Ms. Hoffmaster. Go ahead, go ahead, Councilman.
Okay, and with the police pension fund and the fire pension fund, what I understand, you said that it was in a deficit in, at the end of two thousand eighteen?
Correct.
Each fund was. And the city's supposed to add money into it to keep it in the black. So why wouldn't, and I know you probably can't answer this, but yeah, why wasn't the city council ever notified that, of that? And anyone in the Controller's Office, I know we had a, a, a city controller and assistant city controller, why they wouldn't have told the city council that either during budget hearings or come to a council meeting and told us the situation of uh, what was going on with those pension funds? And I know you probably can't answer that, but it's, it's pretty amazing to me that what, what was going on and the officials that are in charge of the financial business of the city never told of it. Uh, I just think there's more to it, and things need to be uh, looked at in that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Mayor Perry had something to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I feel it's important at this moment, uh, based on what Councilman Presblewski said, that I need to justify that Ms. Hoffmaster took no action on this because she left the employment of the city. She was deputy controller. She was under Mr. Murphy, and she was directed to do things that she felt was unethical and possibly illegal. And she was instructed to go ahead and do these things. So she left. Uh, uh, Ms. Hoffmaster's a fabulous controller, so none of this should fall on her shoulders. One little bit of information that I failed to give you that is very important, that, that you should understand why it's so necessary, what I did last Friday, is that when all is said and done in two thousand nineteen, all the bills are paid, our riverboat revenues, our cash reserve riverboat revenues is going to be the lowest that it has ever been since we've had the riverboat. That's pretty scary. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And are any further council comments? Uh, I've had something to add, so I wanted to thank Mr. Mayor for extending me the invitation to attend that meeting, and uh, I definitely appreciate you taking leadership on this, this matter to get these things back under control. But I'm not gonna sit here and act like uh, we didn't play a part in it. Uh, I know I was on the council for the whole entirety of two thousand nineteen, and I voted no on a lot of those additional appropriations and excess expenditures because I knew that the riverboat fund was dwindling down, and uh, they kept coming with appropriations and, you know, they kept getting passed, so uh, I'm not gonna sit here and act like the council isn't culpable in some of this, so uh, working together with you, I do hope we'll be able to get this under control next year. Appreciate your leadership. Thank you. So we had a, do we have a motion and a second already?
I make a motion.
Okay, we did have a motion by Councilman Paul Presblewski and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Uh, all in favor of approving this resolution, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Supposed to take a roll call.
Uh, if, if, if there's no opposition, we don't need a roll call, do we?
I would say yes.
No?
Okay.
No one is opposed? Uh, on to us, um, their resolution will pass. Uh, on to our first ordinance on second reading by Title Only without rejection.
Okay. An ordinance on second reading by Title Only amending provisions of municipal code regarding the council's rules of order and procedures. And this is introduced by Ms. Deitch and uh, co-sponsored by Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Uh, does the author have anything to add at this time?
Um, I shared the uh, committee um, report, and there was a recommendation to support it with the amendment. Um, I have a question though, um, Count, uh, Attorney Meyer. I have the uh, before we go to public comment, I have, I made sure that everybody has a copy of the revised um, amendment um, that was submitted to the clerk's office on the twenty-first. And can I um, do the amendment now, or do we need to go to a public comment?
No, you should do, make a motion to amend by substitution.
So um, I would like to make a motion to amend the um, the uh, the, the ordinance um, by replacing it with the revised version um, from the committee that was re- recommended by the committee, and everybody should have a copy.
Okay, that was a motion to amend with the revised version, the revised version of the ordinance by Councilwoman Deitch. Is there a second? Second by Council, Councilman Mack. Uh, all in favor of approving this amendment? Uh?
You should ask.
Public.
Public comment.
On the amendment?
Yep.
Okay, is there any public comment on this amendment? Is there any public comment on this amendment?
The public doesn't know what you're.
I read it in my committee report. I read the amendment in my committee report that was submitted um, last week. Um, the amendment was to change the order of the agenda. That was the addition, to move the claim stock it up after standing committees.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Yep.
There, Councilman, President Wessie?
I uh, I, I gotta ask. That was not in the original ordinance, so it's like you're adding a, your, was the order of business in the original ordinance? Okay.
Uh, are there any other council comments on this revised version with the amendments? Having none, um, can we have a roll call, Ms. Sniler?
And this is on the amendment?
Correct.
Okay. Ms. Deitch? Aye.
Vote.
Mr. Don Presblewski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Stemley?
Aye.
Mr. Presblewski? Paul Presblewski?
Nay.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Mack?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one opposed.
Okay, uh, are there any public comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Are there any public comments on this ordinance? Having none, any council comment? Uh, Councilman Paul Presblewski.
I um, I wanna, I gotta say that uh, I still believe that it's fundamentally wrong to introduce legislation before you're sworn in and seated. I don't care what state law says or the council rules say. I think it's fundamentally wrong because you're not actually in the seat. And uh, maybe that, that is the way I truly feel about it. And I got a hard time supporting this because of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other council comment? Having none, I entertain a motion to approve. Oh, sorry, there's second reading. This will be held over for third reading. Okay, unfinished business. Twenty-two council committee assignments, nominations and votes for two thousand twenty voting members on the following council committee assignments. Uh, Animal Control Board, Plan Commission, Public Art Committee, Social Status of African American Males, Solid Waste Management and Tree Board. So at this time, I'll call for uh, nominations for Animal Control Board if there are any. Any nominations for Animal Control Board?
Miss, uh, Angie Deitch.
Yeah. Uh, we have one nomination for Councilwoman Deitch. Are there any other, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a nomination by Councilman uh, Stemley for Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Dabney. Any other nominations for the Animal Control Board? Are there any no- other nominations for Animal, Animal Control Board? Okay, having none. Do we need to call for a vote, or can we just do that by acclamation? Or is that? Okay. Yeah, all in favor of appointing Councilwoman Deitch to Animal Control Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Councilwoman. Uh, next we'll call for nominations for the Plan Commission.
Nominate, um, Council President?
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Deitch, I'm sorry.
Waiting to be recognized, I'm sorry. Um, I nominate Brian Dabney, Councilman Dabney.
And we have, we have a nomination for Councilman Dabney by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilwoman Tillman. Are there any other nominations for the Plan Commission? Uh, any other nominations for the Plan Commission? Having none, uh, all in favor of Councilman Dabney on the Plan Commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, I've got it. Uh, congratulations, Councilman. Uh, now we'll take nominations for the Public Art Committee. Councilman Presblewski?
Uh, I'd like to uh, nominate Don Presblewski.
Support. Okay, we have a nomination for uh, Councilman Don Presblewski for the Public Art Committee and a second by Councilman Dabney. Are there any other nominations for the Public Art Committee? Any other nominations for the Public Art Committee? Having none, I'd like to call for uh, a vote, all in favors uh, for appointing Councilman Don Presblewski to the Public Art Committee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations, Councilman. Okay, solid, oh, Social Status of African American Males Commission. Are there any nominations for?
I nominate uh, Councilwoman Tillman.
Heaven, nomination by Councilman Dabney for Councilwoman Tillman for the Social Status of African American Males Commission and a second by Councilwoman Deitch. Are there any other nominations for the Social Status of African American Males Commission? Any other nominations for Social Status of African American Males Commission? Having none, uh, call for a vote, all in favor of appointing Councilwoman Tillman to the Social Status of African American Males Commission, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Councilwoman. Uh, nominations for the Solid Waste Management.
I nominate Don Presblew- Councilman Don Presblewski.
We have a nomination for Councilman Don Presblewski and a second by Councilman Paul Presblewski for the Solid Waste Management. Are there any other nominations for Solid Waste Management? Any other nominations for Solid Waste Management? Having none, uh, all in favor of appointing Councilman Don Presblewski to the Solid Waste Management, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Councilman. Uh, now we call for the Tree Board. Any nominations for a Tree Board? Councilman Don Pres- I mean, Paul Presblewski?
No, NG went ahead.
Okay.
Um, I nominate um, Councilman Stemley.
I second that motion.
Okay, we have a nomination for Councilman Stemley by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Paul Presblewski for the Tree Board. Uh, are there any other nominations for the Tree Board? Any other nominations for the Tree Board? Having none, all in favor of appointing Councilman Stemley to the Tree Board, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Councilman. Oh, those are our nominations, so. Is it, okay, yeah, Urban Enterprise Association. Are there any nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association?
Yes.
Councilwoman Deitch?
I nominate tree, uh, Councilman, Councilwoman Tillman.
Uh, Councilwoman Tillman, we have one nomination for Councilwoman Tillman. Is there a second? Support. Uh, we have a second by Councilman Dabney. Uh, so- Uh, so there's a nomination by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Dabney to appoint Councilwoman Tillman to the Urban Enterprise Association. Are there any other nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association? Any other, uh, nominations for the Urban Enterprise Association? Having none, I'd like to call for a vote, all in favor of appointing Councilwoman Tillman to the Urban Enterprise Association, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations, Councilwoman. Uh, next we have nominations, the council, the common council has one appointment to the Michigan City Commission for Women. Uh, term expires December twenty-first, two thousand nineteen, incumbent Ms. Cassandra K. Hill. Uh, Ms. Nyelov, have we had any, uh, applications for the Women's Commission?
Yes, we did receive one from Veronica, um, Martin.
Okay, are, are there any nominations for Ms. Martin?
I would like to nominate, um, Veronica Martin, I know her personally, um, she's one of my drifter sisters and she would be a wonderful asset to the commission.
Okay, we have a nomination to appoint Mrs., uh, Ms. Veronica Martin to the Women's Commission by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilman Mack. Are any other nominations for the Women's Commission? Okay, having none, I'd like to call for a vote to appoint Ms. Martin to the Women's Commission, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, congratulations, Ms. Martin. Okay, uh, the council has seven appointments to the Commission on Social Status of African American Males. The incumbents are Ms. Alatine Alec from the Minority Health Partners of Lapeur County, Pastor Edward Damon Carr, senior of the Ministerial Science Alliance, uh, Association. Uh, Mrs. Felicia Kelly from Hope Community, Mr. Willie Millsap from Swanson Center, Ms. Latanga Troutman from N W A C P, Pastor Dennis Carroll from Human Rights Commission and Ms. Tracy Tillman, council appointment. Uh, all seven terms expired February fifteenth of two thousand twenty. Ms. Nyelov, have we had any, uh, uh, letters of appointment in for those?
The only letter we, we received was for, uh, from the Swanson's Center for Willie Millsap.
Okay. So do we have to renominate the incumbent or is it? Or he's an appointment from a, uh, organization, so we just need the letter?
No, that was for. We have to receive a letter from each one of the organizations and then, uh, the council just approves.
Okay, so the only one we can approve is, is, uh, Mr. Willie Millsap?
You can do that or you can wait until we get the rest of them. I did reach out to, uh, the Human Resource, um, Director and she is, um, reaching out to them to get the letters in here.
Okay, so that, we'll wait until we have the next ones ready. Okay, uh, new business? Do we have any new business? Nothing there. Uh, public comment, any from the, anyone from the public wish to speak? Is anyone from the public wish to speak at this time? Does anyone from the public wish to speak at this time? A public comment is closed, any council comments? Councilman Paul Presblesky?
I really, I don't know.
Well, yeah, I, uh, I wanna apologize to, to my brother 'cause I wasn't trying to shortchange him on the comments that I made by no means. And, uh, I also think that, um, the comments that were made by, um, that the consul has a, uh, big responsibility in this. Uh, uh, I will, I will say this, that, you know, I got appointed in September and we were right in, got right into the budget hearings, but let, let me say that these people were, you, you gotta think about what was going on here. And I respect Yvonne's position and I respect her fulfilling her job duties. She's worked on, she's worked under some very good people and, um, I'm glad that you're on board, Yvonne. And I also appreciate the mayor's comments on what he's doing. But the main thing is that these people were let to spend the way they were spending. They were let to do that. It, and the consul was not brought into the circle to know how bad the deficit was going on. So, I, what raised my eyebrow was when we were in the budget hearings and one department came in with a side budget of two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Besides what was already appropriated in the budget, you know? And, uh, it, it, it really set me back as an elected official to have a department do that. And, um, I had a real problem with what was going on there. But now we have the opportunity to make this right, to right this ship. And that's what we're gonna do. And that's our obligation and our main obligation is to be, is a fiduciary capacity of the city funds. And I think what Don said earlier about the controller and the administration, the general public needs to realize that we're gonna, we're gonna make this thing right and we're gonna pick through the budget and, uh, find the extra money that we need. But the, but I want the, the general public to think about how did you overspend three point six million? I mean, I generally know what's in my, I generally do know, have a handle on what's my, in my bank account and I think anybody else does too. And I think that generally everybody knows when they gotta pay their bills. And I just, you know, I was on the council for sixteen years before this and I never, never had this kind of, I'll say it, garbage going on. And that's the way I look at it, garbage. And, uh, if people get offended by what I say, uh, that's too bad because out of sixteen years in, on work on the city council before, we, we had end of the year transfers, all right? But not when you're actually, we're in the black, not in the red. I mean, we're, you know, we're starting out, we're starting out our tenure in the red. So, I, uh, I think that we got a goal and, uh, we need to get your goal on what you wanna do, on how much money you wanna save and get in that Riverboat Fund. Because believe me, that Riverboat Fund, we've had that since either, what, ninety-five or ninety-seven, Yvonne?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. This is an actual shame, a actual shame that we only have one million dollars in there. Or one point five million. I know that the county's got more money than that. So, with saying that, we gotta build up that reserve. So, the, uh, everybody's gonna tighten the belt. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, uh, real quick, wanna say thanks to, uh, the new city controller, Yvonne Hoffmaster. She's been going through each and every account, uh, and, and really, you know, reconciling these accounts. And this is how, uh, you know, these things were discovered. Um, so I have to really applaud her for taking the time out to do that. I know they're still reconciling some stuff, uh, from two thousand nineteen for their general fund, if I'm not mistaken, she's shaking her head, yes. So, we have to, uh, commend her for that. And I do agree with, with, uh, Councilman Paul Presblesky here about, you know, some of the spending that we're gonna have to curtail and, and get some control over. And he, he was talking about something that happened in the budget meetings, uh, last year when we were, we saw a big zero in the actual budgeted amount and we asked, well, you spent three hundred thousand dollars last year, but you budgeted zero and then you come to find out that it was in the Riverboat. Um, and that made us cringe back then and, and we were trying our best to, to, to go through, um, and look at those things. But, but last year, when we set up our budget hearings, it's gonna change this year, be on the finance committee again. Um, even though I think we do have some proper things in order here that's gonna get us on the right track with the mayor, uh, doing some things here, Yvonne looking at all these accounts. But, uh, we're gonna actually have separate days where we're gonna add, where we talk about just the Riverboat Fund and that because, you know, they, we always has done just the departments. So we can really dig into, uh, Riverboat Fund as well when we're, we're doing the budget to get a chance to see what's actually coming in and out of that, so. I think we'll, we'll be, we'll be good, I think we'll be good, so, thank you, Yvonne.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilman, Councilman Stemley. Um, as I said, I, I also could commend, uh, Mayor Perry for the actions that he took, uh, regarding these issues. And, uh, I know I've been up here before, once I, we get our financing finally straightened out too, I'd like to see the appropriation, uh, of a rainy day fund actually being funded also.
Thank you, Councilman.
Any further council comment? Uh, Councilman Mack?
I'd like to commend the mayor also on, uh, his diligence on looking at the budgets and finding these and making it public announcements. Um, and I'd like to jump on to what you said, Mr. President, as, uh, far as our responsibility. There has to be something inherent in the process that allows us to, uh, to, to double check or to find, uh, if Mr. Mayor is totally, um, responsible for the integrity of the finances alone and any one person can come in and do this or that, we have to have something that this body has inherent to go back and check that. So, uh, your diligence, uh, on the books and your diligence, everything we're looking at is gonna support him and I'm, I'm gonna support you in that.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh, Councilman Don Presblesky?
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, first thing I'd like to do is give a shout out to Tyra Walker, who is on the Human Rights, uh, Commission. Uh, what she did, what Tyra did is she worked hand in hand with the, uh, folks out of P and W that put on the MLK celebration, uh, yesterday. And, uh, she did a fantastic job and it was a very nice ceremony, well attended. And that's the eighth one, uh, that I've attended since I've been on the council, I go every year. And, uh, the Human Rights Commission donates towards it, the Social Status of African American Males donate, uh, towards the program. So, it's a program that's, uh, very well done and I just, uh, wanna give Tyra Walker, uh, a shout out for a great job done. Uh, speaking of bills and money, which is a topic of discussion here this evening, uh, I just wanted to let everyone know and I know I've talked to Yvonne about it, but the six percent increase for the NIPSCO bills is going into effect in January. So our electric bills will be going up six percent more, so that's another thing that we're gonna have to, uh, to deal with. And, uh, just to say that I'm glad that Michigan City stepped up to the plate and proposed that resolution last February to fight the NIPSCO rate increase of twelve percent. And it actually wound up to only be, which is still a lot, gonna be a lot of money for the city, six percent. Michigan City, the Michigan City City Council took the lead on that and si- six other cities throughout northwest Indiana. After we had the, uh, leadership to do that, they stepped up to the plate and did it also. So, hopefully those other cities, uh, helped out in that respect. And, uh, the final thing is I know that the, uh, mayor presented tonight and I appreciate that, Mr. Mayor, letting the public know exactly what's going on with the, uh, city finances. Uh, and I know that you have put a freeze on capital Riverboat spending. But, uh, if also, you know, if we could take a look, and a one point two million dollars is not a lot of money, uh, in a Riverboat, is, uh, you know, if we possibly take a look at putting some other kind of, uh, freezes on and controls on by not spending, you know, Riverboat money, you know, whatever the situation may be, if there's something we can do and possibly have a workshop where we can come up with other suggestions, I think we, uh, we need to do that, uh, to help get this thing under, uh, tighter controls. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Deitch.
Um, I wanted to send a congratulations out to the Lapeur County Career and Tech Education Center. Um, they were selected as an Earn and Learn, um, recipient, which is a program for the, well, it's for the Air Compress Academy. But what that allows our students to do is, um, have internships and be paid while, while working these internships while they're in high school. So I would like to congratulate them. Audra Peterson is awesome, principal there, she has, um, brought a lot of money to the Career Tech Education Center there. So I wanna congratulate them. But also I have an announcement, um, next Thursday, um, January thirtieth at eleven thirty a.m. Um, I don't know, most of you, many of you in the public may know that it's National Mentoring Month. And we are looking for mentors in Lapeur County, um, there will be lunch provided. Um, it's eleven thirty a.m. at Silver Palace, the United Way. Um, and, uh, Healthcare Foundation of Lapeur, um, is actually sponsoring this event. So if you would like more information on how you can become a mentor, I know many of you are Boy Scout, Girl Scout leaders, coaches, all of those people are also mentors, but we need more mentors in the schools. So if you're interested, you can contact United Way of Lapeur County at two one nine two one zero three five three four or info@unitedwaylpc.org. And again, we need to, our, well, RSVP is due by the twenty-second, so, um, again, that's for Thursday, January thirtieth. And we would love to have you there. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, I mean, Councilwoman, I'm sorry. Any further council comment?
Uh, I just wanted to add one thing, um, I do appreciate that the mayor and the controller are getting, uh, a handle on everything. But I'm sticking to my guns on this one. We're a council, it's nine of us for a reason, we're representatives of each and every ward and three at large. There's no way this money would have gotten this far out of control had people that are sitting up here not approved it. The mayor can, uh, uh, propose whatever budget he wants, it's up to us to say this, this passes the sniff test or not. Uh, the reason why it's nine of us and one of them is to make sure that there are checks and balances. The mayor can try to go, you know, all out with, you know, fancy things and if we say no, then it doesn't happen. So, we do have to take responsibility and we partake in responsibility going forward. We are the stewards of this Riverboat money, we are the stewards of the rest of the public money, which is also our money because we're also members of this community and taxpayers. And, uh, going forward, this is not the, uh, culture we're gonna be creating and, uh, things are gonna get better, bear with us. Uh, Mayor Perry is doing an excellent job, uh, council, uh, controller Hoffmaster is also doing a great job getting these things under control. And we have, uh, we're, we're fully behind them, supporting us, getting this thing, uh, turned around as Councilman Presblesky said. This ship, we're gonna get it back sailing straight, so, uh, with that being said, I call for, uh, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support, oh. There we go. We got, uh, motion to adjourn by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by, uh, Councilman Dabney for, uh,
I didn't see.
All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.
I didn't see.
Sorry, that's all right. Well, I got, still have you all up here, I, I, I wanna tell you, I, I, I apologize, I was out of sync with the agenda tonight. But, uh, I don't think the council members from the last term should beat themselves up too badly. When I was on the council for four years, from twelve to sixteen, we never got any information. There was no communication between the mayor and the council. And you get fed a lot of numbers as you look at the budget, but you gotta have explanation of what the numbers represent. And you won't have that issue anymore because I'm a team player, you guys are dedicated, so we have a bright future, it's a new game. Thank you.